Okay, before we go on for this item, I just want to ask, obviously you have the right to say whatever it is you'd like to say. I would just ask that, you know, the audience be respectful of the speaker because I can't hear too if there's too much noise in the background. I want to hear, but you know, I want you to be heard not just by the other members that are here listening, but by our TV members because I got a message from home saying that they were having a hard time. You know, we're dealing with the new system as well, so that's probably part of it. But I know when we turn our heads even from the mic for a second, it's hard to hear. So that with, you know, any audience feedback is difficult and I want everybody to have a chance to be heard. So keep that in mind. I mean, obviously, like I said, I can't tell you what to say and what not to say and I wouldn't dare try. I just want everybody to try to get the message across without making it too personal if you can help it. But obviously, say what you feel. All right. Item number seven. Ms. Martin?
And your name and either city or address.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. My name is Melissa Martin from Cocoa.
Is it on yet? Yes, it is.
Sorry.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and members of the Board.
Let me start you back over.
I appreciate that.
There you go.
Mel Martin from Cocoa. I'm speaking in my personal capacity as a citizen and Brevard County resident and based on my career experience as a military officer and attorney. You've already heard plenty tonight and you're about to hear more probably, but I'd like to focus in on two main points to summarize. One, public officials have a higher duty of care in how they communicate, especially to private citizens, just like any other profession of public service. And I'm, I stand by, ready to provide a legal opinion or analysis to break it down for you, or Ms. Bentley can do that for you, but that is just a basic fact to work on. Point two, and now that this board is on actual notice of what has occurred in the last six months, as I have provided by attachment, I believe that there is a clear duty to act accordingly. The issue at bar is whether or not the government, through its officials and agents, may retaliate against private citizens for exercising their free speech rights. Constitutionally, legally, morally, and ethically, the answer to that would be no. No one should be denigrated or threatened with a lawsuit for seeking clarity about public records law, for example, which happens. No one should have their jobs put in jeopardy for making an online statement critical of a politician, which happens. No one should be dehumanized by an elected official or publicly humiliated or treated like a hostile witness, which happens. It scares people away from participating in their own government. We're not scared, but that's, that's the, that's what happens when people are treated like that. We need to be clear on our expectations of acceptable conduct. If I make, may recommend this as a simple standard, and I draw it from professional expectations laid out by the Florida Supreme Court, for your consideration and hopefully action. Quote, "In order to preserve and protect the integrity of Brevard County government, public officials and their agents shall strive to be honest, civil, and respectful in their interactions with others, avoiding disparaging personal remarks, threats, or acrimony in any oral or written communication to include social media. Intentionally engaging in such conduct that proves to chill or violate the First Amendment rights of Brevard residents may be regarded as a form of malfeasance," end quote. So two final points for tonight, even though I thought I had three minutes. Thanks Sally. I'll, I'll answer questions after I'm done. To reiterate, continuing to take no action or failing to take effective action can be argued to indicate that this board adopts this policy, that it's fine for public officials or those acting on their behalf to threaten or retaliate against private citizens exercising their constitutional rights. As I'm sure many of you know, such adoption exposes this board and our county and therefore taxpayer money to liability under 1983 Civil Rights Actions. Finally, if anyone believes that your personal liberties outweigh the person, the people's ability to exercise our constitutional rights, no one is preventing you from fully enjoying free speech as a private citizen. This point is an important measure of fitness for official duty. If you care more about yourself than how your actions affect the rights of others, perhaps public service is not your calling after all. And Madam Chair, may I address Commissioner Loebert? It'll be civil.
Okay. I mean, of course.
I would, I, I, I know that you and I have talked back and forth in the, over the last week on email and, and civilly. And so you know my, my motives are based on exactly what I said. It's not personal. There's no partisan agenda here whatsoever. I basically hope that our base expectations of public official conduct can be restored and enforced in the future. So I, I stand ready to answer your questions.
Sure. Are you okay with the back and forth dialogue?
I am.
And just keep it short?
Sure.
Because I've got a lot of cards and I don't...
Yes, definitely.
I would suggest, you know, we've, we've dealt with one another since, well, since, since I got elected. I know that there was someone that came earlier who indicated I falsely accused her of being dishonest. I stand by my prior statements, who did state that you were my adversary or my opponent, or that'll be in the minutes for today's meeting. Were we ever adversaries or opponents?
No.
Not to my knowledge either. I know, thank you. I know when we first met, I met midway between my office and where you lived or worked to try to make it convenient for you. I sat down and talked with you about everything from issues that I saw in the TDC that quite frankly still give me some concern and we're still researching and having an audit go on. I don't think we had any incivility in that, did we?
Not at all. And that's why it pains me to have to come here today because I actually, I enjoy your, your leadership style as, as far as being accessible to people and responsive when we have questions or concerns.
If I may just move it on.
Please.
So we, we had other issues. Obviously, there was a brouhaha. You can term it something more or less colorful than that if you'd like, with respect to the, the COC and the IRL funds. I know we went back and forth, I can't even tell you how many times. What would you say, a dozen times, 10 times, 20 times maybe?
On email?
Yeah, by email and, and discussions to try to get that at least in a better place, that I think it ended up in.
Right.
Would you say that anything was uncivil in those correspondence?
Not at all.
And then I think more recently, we had something involving a fertilizer signage ordinance a couple of months back, maybe. I may be off on the date. And I know that it involved communications between UI and then also our Natural Resources Director. Did I say anything or intimate anything that was less than civil?
Absolutely not.
So here, here's essentially where we are, and I, I think I've, I've already made this known to you and you've, you've given me your, your counterpoint as well and I, I respect your opinion, I just don't happen to agree with it. When I signed up to, to run for political office, I signed up and I think that folks voted for me to get things done, not to be the most cautious person in the world when it comes to reacting to individuals that are, are seeking to create problems. I think you raised a lot of, a lot of good points in what you mentioned at the beginning. I do draw issue with there being a lack of context in a lot of them and I'd be happy to address any of them that you really would like to do that with. My, my concern is that there is a double standard that is glaringly evident to me. And I'm not talking about you specifically, but a lot of folks that have either feigned being upset or that really may be upset, where they think that due to my having been elected, that I should be held to a different standard such that my First Amendment rights would be eroded. And I have a different style from most folks that are elected officials, simply because I don't like the average politician. When I became a lawyer, I didn't like lawyers. I like more of them now.
I can agree with both.
Yeah, and again, it's, I'm not doing things with the purpose of trying to be overly diplomatic to the extent that I don't displease anyone. I'm trying to do things in a way that's effective and gets things done.
Absolutely. If I'm, if I may just, and I think I've already answered your concerns that you're bringing up right now over email. And if, if it's okay with you, I can share it with the, the other members of the commission for context about what we talked about already. So we don't waste any more time. But, and I think that it's worth further discussion. I think that there is a community objective concern here, that if you are willing to engage in this discussion, we, it would be wonderful to talk about where do First Amendment rights really end, if they do. And you and I disagree on where they end, and both being lawyers, reasonable minds, I think it's worth a discussion.
And, I'm sorry.
So I guess my, my only ask tonight is not only to consider some of the community feedback that you might have, but, but to consider asking the staff, maybe Ms. Bentley's office, to look at what I had provided you as a skeleton proposal of something we can put into the, into Brevard County Ordinance, the code. I think that will help alleviate our concerns and we can finally put this to bed and move on, get back to county business within a reasonable hour.
Can we get my first name for a moment?
You may.
Okay, good deal. All right, so Melissa, my, my thought, and I believe I may have already extended the offer to you, I'm happy to sit down and work on some aspirational goals if you think that that's a benefit. But my concern is, is someone that's a staunch First Amendment, Second Amendment, Third Amendment and so forth activist, I, I don't care what the, the constitutional amendment is, I, I really genuinely in my heart of hearts believe in them. And I, I have no problem working with you to set some sort of aspirational goals. And they're going to be things that you want that quite frankly, I may not agree with, but there are probably going to be things that you would like to see that would move things in a better direction that I, I would likely agree with. So my thought is, you know, I've worked better with you than many others that are in, I don't want to say your camp, but that have aligned themselves with you on this particular issue, simply because you don't come at me with, with a horrible attitude cursing at me, telling me all the nasty stuff, some of which I've forwarded to you from, from some other individuals. But the point is, you know, I, I really have tried to be reasonable with everyone in giving what I get. And someone that approaches me like you and has a good attitude and wants to accomplish something, I'm happy to continue working with you. If you had an issue with, with something I've been doing, I would like to think that you've been comfortable coming up to me and expressing that. I would like to think that I've been accessible and I'd like to think that I've followed up on everything that we've talked about and may continue to talk about as, as things move on in the future. So, I mean, if you're willing to do that, I'm still willing to do it.
Absolutely. And I'm hoping the, the board will be able to speak to this as well. So my two final points is this, are this. One is, First Amendment rights go this way, from the government to the people. It's built on making sure that the government does nothing to chill, abridge, or otherwise affect negatively the rights of the people to engage in their government, to speak up, to criticize, to address their grievances, et cetera. And that's the way it works. When, when you are fully employed with your First Amendment rights of this is how I want to talk, and, and it in effect destroys this, this, this relationship that the government has with the people, that's when I have to step up and say that's wrong. I hope you understand that.
And I, I hope you understand my position that I don't think it's a reasonable expectation that folks give up First Amendment rights simply by, by virtue of having been elected to office. You know, it's, it's something where I understand your, your position, I don't agree with it. If that's something that ethically is, is where you think things ought to be, that's different from what's legally required. And I, I can tell you that these folks that you're concerned about, I guess chilling free speech, we have more free speech as a result of things that I've said and done, not less. I don't think I've had anyone, I don't think I've had, you know, any, anywhere near this number of people come on innocuous issues. They come here because there's something that they find worthy of speaking about. The folks that are here to essentially chastise me for having used my First Amendment rights are essentially trying to chill my free speech. And just, just as I would respect your right to come up here and to be civil to you and not interrupt you, you know, I would hope that the same courtesy would be extended to me because it's, it's something where whatever standards you want to impose, I'm not going to support standards that have one requirement for this particular group and one requirement for this particular group and if there are other groups, separate requirements.
Not at all. And I think if we just look at the standards that are pretty much laid out by the Florida Bar, for instance, or in the military, officers can't say certain things, you know, or when we do say something, we have to maintain the public trust in everything we say and do, much like lawyers for the sake of the judicial system. It's about what the public views as right or wrong. It's not about us.
Well, it's about our freedoms and about our, our rights.
Absolutely.
Because then the populace changes. If the populace feels one way, then the populace decides what's appropriate for a public person to take.
I'm not talking about substantive issues, Madam Chair, but I'm talking...
But I know this is probably, you know, I don't know if this is a good time, but this back and forth is like probably more of a conversation that maybe you two need to have together.
And I'm happy to sit down with you whenever you'd like to go.
Because you, you presented your agenda item, you guys have had some dialogue, you're obviously not going to agree. Commissioner Tobio, did you have questions for Ms. Martin or did you just have comment?
I wanted...
Or did you want to speak after the question?
Just a comment real quick. I just wanted to thank you for your service and I wanted to say I disagree with Commissioner Loebert on supporting all of the amendments, the 18th Amendment to the Constitution, ban the sale of alcohol. And I firmly stand against that, that one. So just a point of clarification.
So noted.
There's Commissioner Tobio with just being difficult. Okay, Elizabeth Michaelman. And after, if I said that properly, I'm sorry.
May I just confirm that the ask was relayed to ask Ms. Bentley for some advice on this issue.
Okay. Elis...
Elizabeth Michaelman.
Michaelman.
Hi, how are you?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you say your name and, and city?
Yeah. It's Elizabeth Michaelman. I reside at 898 South Tropical Trail on Merritt Island. I've been there since 1995. To start with, I appreciate your listening. I'm on the Mel's camp, okay? I'm not here to get personal with anybody. In fact, I don't even want to be here, but I felt compelled to have to be here. And there's a lot of reasons of late that maybe all of us in this room should be concerned. The national dialogue has drifted so poorly down whatever drain we're going, we no longer can talk to one another and that has to stop. Mel has brought out, Mel has brought out some really good points, but I couldn't help but notice when I came in here, look at your own back wall. What does that say? That's your pledge of civility and we've lost sight of something. Mr. Loebert, you get to stare at that every Commissioner meeting. It's a pledge of civility. Now, if we could find a way to get back, to have conversations, to understand what the other person is saying, you have to realize that there are repercussions when you go, in my opinion, when you go off, I want to say the deep end because some of the things that you stated were pretty bad. Vermin? It offended me. But when you go off the track like that, you do have, you put us in a position where we are going to start pushing back. I personally won't, but I know how to manage my Facebook account. I know how to manage my LinkedIn. I know what I can and cannot do on it. And I think any 12-year-old can too. So, you know, you're saying that it's free speech. I'm saying it's speech con crazy because right now, the Supreme Court is going to be looking how Facebook is to be ascribed as a legitimate point for free speech. Because right now, there's more lies, more trolls, more idiots on Facebook than I think there are common people that care about little dogs. Well, anyway, I'm kind of digressing. I want to be quick because I didn't really want to be redundant, but as I said, I really didn't want to be here. You know, it's really the duty of our elected officials to behave accordingly. And it is also my duty as a member of the public to sometimes remind all the board members that you are guided by specific legal and ethical codes, codes that maintain due process and civility. In fact, I thought, I was under the understanding that you are required to take a yearly ethics course for four hours to deal with situations such as this. Is that not correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. That is, you know, your Florida's, you know, statutes at work. I am angry and that's probably why I'm fluttering. I'm usually a very, you know, natural speaker and I do apologize for that. And some of you have shown that you understand why I might be a little upset. I just want to live in my home, do my thing, you know, fight for, you know, fights I can maybe have some impact on. But when words start to stir up anger, that's when we have a problem. Now, there's an interesting proverb, 1511. It reminds each of us that a soft answer turns away wrath, but a harsh word stirs up anger. And I think that's where we're at right, right now. And it's kind of odd, I've just recently been watching the Game of Thrones. Excellent question was asked in, in it. Who do you serve? Do you serve the realm or do you serve the throne? And those are questions I think you have to ask yourself. Now, Mr. Loebert, you said you were elected by a, by a majority, would you say, of voters in Brevard District 2?
And I would just caution, I, I'm trying not to do the back and forth dialogue, dialogue. The only reason why I, you know...
All right. Well, the presumption is that each one of you got elected by a majority. What I thought was really interesting, I'm kind of a numbers person, so I like to look at the hard data so I know what I'm speaking of. It's really odd. Forty-three percent of voters did not vote for you. Fifty-seven percent of voters voted for you. And that sounds like, okay, that's a landslide. Not so. I want to understand why 35% of the voters in District 2 didn't select either candidate. So in reality, I'm not sure if there's a majority here and you should consider that just talking to us. Mel's capable, I can be nice, I can be, seriously. But we have to go back. You all know who Chief Justice Brandeis was. All right. This is back, you know, when we used to be civil. One of the things he said, and Mel kind of alluded to, is that he often spoke about the responsibility of elected officials. And, and I quote, "Our government is..." Sorry. That's okay. Is, basically what he said is that crime and incivility is contagious and leading from the top will have greater reward to all the constituents than fighting with them. You don't want this every week.
Okay, I got to cut you off only because I got it. I'm trying to be fair. Sandra Sullivan. And after Sandra, Phil Stasic?
Sandra Sullivan sells Patrick Shores. So, I just want to say I'm neutral, I'm an independent. And what I see a lot on this issue is we have a very politically charged society. And social media has become a platform to do what, in my opinion, is character assassination, taking things out of context and hypocrisy at all levels of government. In my opinion, it has become almost political warfare to manipulate and destroy reputations and take things out of context manipulations in the interests of furthering politics on either side. As I said, I'm independent. Distortions are too often taken as fact. Where is the civility I think is needed, but as it seems that's unlikely in the current political climate, freedom of speech is important not to be eroded and perhaps having people with a backbone to stand up is equally needed. I want to point out that when, as, as much as I respect Mel very much, when she started here at the podium, she started with the comment that she was speaking in a personal capacity. So I'm just going to be real quick because I know there's a lot of people that want to speak and I'll say, can public officials not also as part of their First Amendment right? So what stands important to me is that when we have commissioners that have a commitment to doing the right thing, it's been, I have a particular problem in my community with the dump under my home in our community and I look very strongly at people's actions and not their words. And my own commissioner, I feel, has let me down. Whereas I've had extensive conversations with Commissioner Loebert, who's not in my district, who's taken the time to understand and, and even support my quest to try and get our area cleaned up. And I very much appreciate his efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. After Phil, we have Linda Huba.
Good evening, Chairman Isnardi and fellow commissioners. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm Phil Stasic, North Merritt Island, speaking on behalf of the Space Coast Progressive Alliance. I stand with Ms. Martin and concur with her efforts to protect the integrity of Brevard County Government, because that's really what we're talking about tonight. The SEPA believes that Brevard County is now at a crossroad. Shall we adopt ethics guidelines which include meaningful oversight or will our county government degenerate into what Commissioner Smith likened the Jerry Springer Show? It is essential that our country, excuse me, that our county take the high road because the alternative is chaos. It's dangerous and counterproductive. This is long overdue. We will work with you to take the high road. It's probably become obvious to you, but for us, it, it's obvious that a formal ethics oversight structure or office or board is now necessary to keep our county government above reproach. Please take the high ground and be an example for all of us. Do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
After Linda, we have Sanjay Patel. Did I butcher your last name?
It's Huba, Linda Huba, Indian Harbor. When one reads Mr. Loebert's words, what a quote, scourge on humanity, end quote, Ms. Patel's quote, litter would likely be, end quote, one might wonder, what must Ms. Patel have said about Mr. Loebert's children and/or future children for it to have come to this? The answer is, of course, nothing. The quote, preceding provocation, end quote, again, those are Mr. Loebert's words, what he claims he felt gave him justification and license to write what he did, was Ms. Patel's opinion expressed on her, her Facebook page many, many, many months ago, as a Democrat, as a woman, and as a woman married to a person of color, that either the Democratic presidential candidate or the Democratic vice presidential candidate should be a woman and/or person of color. That's it, an opinion many Democratic voters share. But I don't believe Mr. Loebert really cares that deeply about who the Democratic Party chooses to run on their ticket, who Ms. Patel supports or doesn't, or why. I'm sorry, that doesn't ring true to me. His words are a deeply personal dehumanizing attack, words that were described by another commissioner, I was told, as sickening, because they are. And even after Mr. Loebert's words blew up online and in the media, I watched as he went on for hours, in fact, days, Facebook posting, to the point where he actually referenced Ms. Patel's uterus, yes, typed out U-T-E-R-U-S on his keyboard, seemingly oblivious to how really inappropriate and frankly disturbing that is. So he exercised his freedom of speech the way he chose and now many people are exercising theirs and that's good. And I am using mine to say that I think that the commissioner should exercise his freedom of speech less abusively, yes, less provocatively, more responsively, more productively. And I hope the rest of the commission will enable that by supporting Ms. Martin's proposal for a basic code of conduct, you know, as indicated by the pledge of civility, which evidently isn't quite cutting it. And, you know, last month, the commissioners, you know, tried to kind of steer it back, you know, in a, in a good way and that didn't work. So that's why I support the proposal for a basic code of conduct. It's been a long meeting. Some of it was interesting and I'm glad that I stuck it out because I wanted to personally say, I think this kind of personal attack is regrettable and unnecessary and we can do better. Thank you.
After, after Sanjay, we have Jay Oscar Rivera.
My name is Sanjay Patel. I live in Satellite Beach. I stand here embarrassed, saddened, and angry by what you have allowed to transpire in and out of this chamber. I'm specifically talking about the abhorrent behavior of Vice Chair Loebert. I know you have all read the comments that he made about my wife and that have made national headlines, including a formal rebuke by the Anti-Defamation League of Florida. The only one who has not publicly commented is Chair Isnardi. And I need to give props to Commissioner Smith for having the courage to be the only one to speak out plainly about this. I'm asking that the commission remove Commissioner Loebert from his vice chair position, censure him for his actions, and ask for his resignation. Commissioner Loebert, Commissioner Loebert has threatened the livelihood of an individual by tagging her employer for comments he found offensive. He violated the public's trust when he decided to serve as attorney for Chair Isnardi's husband, who is facing his own alleged violations of the public trust. And then without provocation... And then, without provocation, joked about protesters with a snowplow and spewed vitriol in a hate-filled comment against my wife. I wonder how Commissioner Lober would have felt had his wife been the target of a similar attack by a public official. And instead of apologizing, Commissioner Lober has deflected, doubled down, and dismissed the comments as political rivalry in the press. With barely half a year in office, Commissioner Lober has already demonstrated that he is wholly unfit to hold his seat. Perhaps this isn't surprising, coming from someone who was impeached from his student senate seat at Brandeis for missing too many diversity committee meetings. Sadly, Chair Isnardi hasn't said a word about her vice chair's behavior. Well, maybe it's because her community affairs director, Vic Lubker, is speaking on her behalf. In public Facebook groups, Mr. Lubker has referred to my wife and I as "freeloading entitlement hacks", "street corner beggars," and he called my wife "a joke," "a circus act," and suggested she had no work ethic. Interestingly, Commissioner Lober's abortion and snowplow comments were both replies to posts made by Mr. Lubker in a forum he administers. To be clear, the chair's community affairs director is echoing the very same insults as the vice chair, apparently sometimes even during regular working hours. Chair Isnardi, in your silence, does Mr. Lubker speak for you? Are our tax dollars paying for this? I marched in the Fourth of July parade last week with the Brevard Dems. We were right behind the Trump 2020 truck. Along the route, a gentleman in a MAGA hat saluted us and said, "I still love you." To which we replied, "We love you too." This is what Brevard can and should be. But instead, we have individuals like Commissioner Lober and Mr. Lubker that can't see beyond partisan lines and are seeking instead to eradicate us. We can actually build a better, stronger Brevard that embraces all of our differences, but it will take some bold actions by you to make that possibility real. We're counting on you to take those first actions tonight. Thank you.
After Jay Oscar Rivera, we have Dr. Margaret Hayes.
Hello, my name is Oscar. I live in Cocoa, Florida. Thank you, Madam Chair and the rest of the commission, for this opportunity. As a resident of Brevard County, I believe that the majority of the residents of this county want what's best for our county. Regardless of political ideology, race, gender identity, religion, ethnicity, including all of our differences, we want what is best for our community. The question becomes, how do we go about that? How do we make sure that we have economic growth, safe school, good infrastructure, and protect the environment? Well, we must sit down, actively listen to each other. Compromising and negotiating could be a good way to start. By doing this, listening to each other, we could learn from each other. We can share different ideas and learn how to work together. We should not allow a divisive tone in our community. We should not allow leaders in our community to continue with a divisive message. Inside this county chamber and outside of these chambers. Instead, we should demand from our leaders to be role models with their actions and behaviors. Community leaders should be inclusive of the community. They should encourage participation in the political process and encourage the community to be part of the helping process, not discouraging participation by intimidating techniques and name-calling when we do not agree on a topic. This is simply not the way to go about our differences. In recent months, we have seen behaviors from local elected officials that are simply unacceptable. We have seen name-calling when someone disagrees with you. This is simply not acceptable. We should demand higher standards for our community leaders, specifically those who are elected official, elected by the people for the people. Elected officials are representatives of the community, not a portion of the community. And yes, we are a diverse community. So we expect our elected officials to be inclusive with our diverse community, because diversity is a strength in our community. This is not a political issue. This is not us versus them. This is not a right versus left. This is not R versus D. This is simply a community issue. We, as a community, should not allow elected officials to behave in this matter. We should protect the integrity of this county commission. The question is, what are you, as a commission, are gonna do about it? And not only what are you gonna do about it, but when are you going to act and do what is best for our community commission? Thank you.
Thank you. After Margaret Hayes, we have Betsy Bray.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak here. My name is Margaret Hayes, and I live in Cocoa Beach. I'm a constituent of Mr. Lober's. I'm a retired psychiatrist. And as I'm sitting here in the meeting, I'm noting all of this hostility and division. And it's hard to see how governing can be conducted in an environment that is so intense. It's the intensity of the hostility, of the ill feelings, and the passions that really reflect pain. I think that what people don't understand or appreciate is that remarks that are made intended to hurt and wound really do do that. And wounded animals, wounded people react quite often in a violent or hostile way. I'm not seeing any violence here, but of course, one ill word is going to provoke another. I know that Mr. Lober has said that if someone says something bad about him, he's gonna come back and maybe just as strong. But this is not a relationship of peers here. Mr. Lober is our elected representative, to whom we're supposed to be able to go with any concerns we have about our government, about our county, about our district in particular. And that means that Mr. Lober has to be able to communicate with all manner of people. We're a diverse group of folks. Some are more educated than others. Some are more stable than others. But I dare say that you all, as commissioners, are in the position of having to find a way to build a bridge to some people who can be pretty difficult sometimes. But that comes with the territory. It's part of the job. If you're gonna represent people, you need to be able to find a way to talk to them. And going tit-for-tat, quid pro quo, isn't the way to do that. The thing that really disturbed me about Mr. Lober's comments were when he talked about Stacy Patel's potential motherhood, about her and tearing down her potential offsprings and denigrating them and insulting her possible kids. That's a surefire way to be as hurtful as possible to any woman. We all know that. You don't go after a woman as a mother. You just don't. It's intended to wreak pain and to be as difficult as possible for the person to cope with. And so that disturbed me enormously. The other thing that I saw in that was a very deep misogyny. And that is a special concern, because half of, half of Mr. Lober's constituents, roughly, are female. And if I ask myself the question, sitting here this evening, as a constituent of Mr. Lober's, how comfortable would I feel going to him with the question or problem I had with the county? And I have to answer myself, I wouldn't. I would try to find any manner of ways to deal with the problem other than sitting down face-to-face with Mr. Lober. And I'm not easily intimidated. I wouldn't, I would find, I would go ahead and do it. But if I put myself in the shoes of a woman who's been domestically abused, or a rape survivor, or someone with a family history of drug abuse, and a person who has been wounded in one way or another, I would not expect that person to be able to go on her own and go toe-to-toe with Mr. Lober. And I don't think she should have to. I think Mr. Lober needs to be able to bend and accommodate that person. Thank you.
Thank you. I know, I want to comment too, but...
Good evening, everyone. It's a late night, isn't it? I don't know that I can add much. Oh, Betsy Bray, I'm sorry. Betsy Bray, Sunset Drive, Cocoa Beach. I don't know that I can add much more to the discussion tonight. I do hope that you will all really take the opportunity to hear what you've heard tonight from everyone, that a lot of people were really personally hurt and taken aback by Mr. Lober's comments, and that I think we've all gone too far in just accepting that we can say whatever's on our mind in whatever way and to ever, whomever we feel that we can, we can talk to. And it has to change. It has to start here. It's intimidating to come up to this microphone. For most people, this is really a scary thing to do. It is. It's a very uncomfortable thing to do for most people. And it's scary, you know, we elected you people to represent us. We elected you people to, you know, stand and speak for all of us, all of us, Mr. Lober, all of us. And we are in a minority, as a Democrat, in this area. And it's intimidating to go and talk to this group. And we have to be more civil. We have to start now. We have to start here. This is as good a place as any to start. And it just has to change. And thank you all for listening tonight.
Thank you. How long are we gonna talk? Okay, just for a minute.
You know, I'll give our chair credit for kind of silencing me over here and trying to push me toward the end, but I've just heard a few things that I feel compelled to respond to, but...
And I do too, so we have to...
Right. I'm not gonna go back. I just want to address this most recent speaker. And she talks a good, she talks a good talk. But if you look at her prior comments and what she's done in the past, specifically in relation to me, even as far back as the time I was campaigning, it doesn't mesh. Someone can call for civility while they're encouraging other people to sue me. Let's see, let's read this. Even if, she says, "I hope people sue him. He bets they won't since he has more dollars, dollars, and connections." That's what wants civility. So I just want to point out, the side that you're hearing here is not the entire side.
Okay. Loki Moore, and after Loki, we have Stacy Patel.
Hi, my name is Loki Moore. I'm in West Melbourne. I just wanted to come talk to you tonight about the Patels. As a young, a politically motivated young person, there are no two people who I could have been more fortunate to meet than Sanjay and Stacy. Through knocking doors with them, trying to change hearts and minds, and forming a relationship with the two, they taught me a lot. They taught me how to use my passion in a positive way. They taught me the value of hard work and fighting for what I believe in. And they taught me, I think, how to be a better person. But I'm not here to talk tonight about what they have done and the great qualities that they are and how wrongly their character has been judged by Commissioner Lober. I'm here to talk about how the comments that Commissioner Lober has made have no place on this board, on the Board of County Commissioners, and I hope that the board will take that into account and do what's right and bring civility back to this county. Thank you.
Thank you. And after Stacy Patel, we have Sandy Doughty.
Hi. My name's Stacy Patel. I'm from Satellite Beach. I live in a house across the street from the high school where I graduated, where my mom graduated. Brevard is my home. Really sorry. And like all residents, I ought to be welcome in these chambers to share the issues that matter to me, to offer my ideas and my abilities to confront the challenges that face our community. Public participation is not partisan. I'm here to ask this commission tonight to support Mel, to create policies that protect free speech in the public trust. And I have to go even further and ask this commission to censure Commissioner Lober, to remove him from committee appointments and the role of vice chair. The issues we face are lagoon, rising seas, opioid addiction that killed my own brother, low wages, failing infrastructure. It's gonna require all of us. Yet I hear regularly from those who fear speaking their truth to your power. One wrote to me, "I'm simply trying to understand why he's allowed to continue. I live in District Two, and I don't feel confident to even show up at these meetings." Just tonight, someone in the room came to me and said she didn't feel comfortable speaking because she felt she might have to someday ask Commissioner Lober for something and didn't want to earn his what I've received. Free speech is the bedrock of our country. No nation can be truly of, by, or for the people if the people cannot be heard or if they fear retaliation from their government. This is why I came here seeking your assistance on March 12th and May 21st, and it's why I'm here tonight. Since my last visit, Commissioner Lober said he might look the other way if I had an abortion, because he believes my litter would be a scourge on humanity. In separate posts about protesters, Commissioner Lober responded to the comment, "If you hit one, back up and go again," with a so-called joke about a snowplow. His remarks reference a Boston protest where senior citizens were intentionally splashed with ice by a driver who's now on probation for disorderly conduct. So essentially, Mr. Lober made a joke of criminal retribution against those exercising their First Amendment rights. The Anti-Defamation League of Florida has said his remarks could be taken to greenlight violence, and I agree. In May, Commissioner Lober and Commissioner Isnardi's community affairs director respectively liked and laughed at a comment which said it would be terrible to post my address as an invitation to everyone less fortunate than me so that they could help themselves to my possessions. These incidents continue an escalating pattern of unacceptable conduct that I've brought to your attention for months, yet you've offered no resolution. Commissioner Lober retaliated against an online critic by threatening her employment interest, lambasted a resident who requested public records, blocked dissenters from online discussions, and created an apparent conflict of interest by establishing an attorney-client relation with the chair's husband. Commissioner Lober has now further embarrassed Brevard in the local, state, and national press. And I know he wants to dismiss these criticisms as purely partisan. Yet Republican Representative Tyler Saroy called his comments inappropriate. Conservative commentator Bill Mick has called Commissioner Lober a national embarrassment. Republican candidate Tom Gumm called for Lober's resignation. And I do too. Commissioner Lober, for the sake of our community, I ask that you resign.
Sandy, Sandy Doughty, and after Sandy, we have Catherine Martinez.
I can't believe I have to follow you, Stacy. My name is Sandy Doughty. I live in Grant, Bulgaria. And I'd like to thank you all for letting me speak tonight. Before I go on to my prepared... Before I go on to my prepared comments, I would like to just quickly touch on something that happened tonight when Mr. Loeb was defending his cruel comments about Mrs. Patel. I don't believe the audience was trying to stop him or impede his right to speak, but they were honestly gasping in horror. So let me go on to what I came to say. My question to all of you tonight is, can we here in Brevard County, Florida, be better than this? The divisiveness in our country in the past couple years has become overwhelming. Bullying isn't just for kids anymore. The Red Party is pitted against the Blue Party. One side bullies while the other side tries to call it out. Friends have stopped speaking to each other, and families have been torn apart. Recently, at a town hall for Mayor Pete Buttigieg, a young person asked him how to deal with a bully. The mayor's answer included, "Ask them, 'Are you okay?'" I believe we should be asking Mr. Loeb, "Are you okay?" As a constituent of this county, I want to ask you, the commission, can't we be better than this? Can't we be more human? Can't we be more civil? Can't we stop the crude and cruel bullying of people who speak out? Can't we stop the excuses and be more apologetic and regretful? Can't we be quicker to use our minds than to open our mouths? Can't we hold ourselves to a higher standard? Can't we show more respect to those that are different than ourselves? If the answer is, "No, we can't be better than we are", then we are stuck in this divisive, polarized world. Then what? If the answer is, "Yes, of course, we can be better than this", then who among you will lead us? Who is actually willing to move us forward? It requires leadership. Who is willing to take the higher ground? Can we change the course of history right here in Brevard County? Asking for a friend. Thank you.
I have to ask. How, when are you due?
Any minute.
I was going to ask that question, but I didn't want to be rude. Name and address, please.
Dr. Catherine Martinez, Melbourne, Florida.
Thank you.
At 39 weeks pregnant, this is the last place that I want to be right now. But I just felt like it was too important to miss. And somebody asked me, you know, "You should just be home, put your feet up. You don't need to fight anyone else's battles." But it's not just, you know, a personal attack against Stacy. It's a bigger issue when our elected officials hide behind the guise of free speech. And sure, you legally have the right to free speech. But as many other people have stated, there should be a higher standard for elected officials. I didn't prepare anything because I have many other things on my to-do list before this baby comes. But I just wanted to read into the record my personal, the interaction that I had with Mr. Loeb. This was the first interaction we ever had over social media. Before this, I don't believe he was aware of my existence, and this is how he treated me. His comment was directed at someone else. Quote, "She's not ever smiling at commission meetings. She actually has one of the most miserable looks I've ever seen on a human being outside of perhaps hospice. Self-inflicted misery is the likely culprit." And I commented saying, "This behavior is despicable. How is your comment relevant or in any way appropriate?" And his response to me, "You mean to say that my comment about someone frowning is despicable, but an openly racist sexist comment in the same thread is okay by you?" I commented that she looks miserable. To attempt to wordsmith that into a sexist comment is truly grasping at straws. News flash, people don't dislike you because of your ethnicity. They dislike you because you're mentally unstable. Too bad you're so indoctrinated that you can't see through the Kool-Aid you're drinking and the hypocrisy and the double standards you're hocking to the wrong crowd. This is appalling to me that an elected official is speaking to his constituents this way. You can say it's free speech, but to retaliate against constituents for their free speech, we need to do better. I would encourage the commission to address the civility pledge. There should be some sort of oversight advisory board. And I second what Mel says in her article, "The base expectation of a public official includes no dehumanizing language toward private citizens, no retaliatory behavior against private citizens, and no chilling of any speech, much less critical political statements made by private citizens. As an elected official, you all have a higher duty and greater responsibility to conduct yourselves with honor, civility, and decorum." Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Howell. Sorry. Carolyn Howell.
Thank you, commissioners. I taught...
Name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Carolyn Howell. I live in Melbourne. I taught high school and college classes for 43 years before retiring. And when I was teaching, I did not give up my First Amendment rights. But I certainly understood the wisdom of modulating my speech both in and out of the classroom. As a professional and as a representative of the organizations that hired me, I was obligated to listen to those who disagreed with me, to consider their concerns, to hear them, and to treat everyone with respect, even when it wasn't reciprocated. I was surprised to learn recently that there is no written code of conduct for the Brevard commissioners, no express understanding that the commissioners should listen respectfully to the citizens of the county, no express understanding that one's speech in and out of meetings should be respectful, even when it is not reciprocated. As a former teacher, of course, I view this as a learning opportunity. And clearly, some learning has taken place. But I ask that the board develop a written code of conduct that explicitly addresses these issues and further that citizen participation be encouraged in its development. We must improve civil discourse for the benefit both of the citizens of Brevard and for their elected officials. We can be better. You must be better. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for public comments. Does the board have any response time?
There's at least one more card.
Oh. I have a lot of public comment cards, but I'm talking about this item on the agenda. So if you signed up for public comment, you'll be next. It's public comment. Yeah. No, you're fine. See you, Anna. I'll move on to item K. And that's public comments. I have nobody on the... Bruce Ganter. And these, since it's public comment, it'll be three minutes. Bruce is left. Thanks, Phil. Mary Consolato. Mary Consolato. Charles Tovey. I saw him here. Yeah, we're on to public comment. You can fill out a public comment card if you like.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. I'd like to make a motion to dismiss all the sanctions against me and my property in lieu of what I've already done for the lagoon. Second, the motion, nobody? Boeing headquarters moved to Titusville. I wonder if the EDC had anything to do with luring them to Brevard? If they had cold night shelters, shouldn't we have a hot night shelter for these sweltering? More people die of the heat than pedestrian safety. If we could put a little flashing light on these pedestrian crossways, wouldn't that enhance the visibility of pedestrians crossing and acknowledging that they do have the signal? And, "Slow down, stop, no." Potholes are from the excess water from our properties that are built up and not accepting the... So we have a large road problem. $800,000 grant for a college to study how the saltwater will affect the lagoon. Commissioner Smith brought it up a couple of years ago about the installation of Sebastian River. But aside from that, you'll change the whole ecology, environmental place of the lagoon adding more saltwater. And that's part of the problem now. I have solutions that, for the problem, and as soon as I can get time or the appointments to do it. What's happened to me is statistically significant. I appreciate it. I have nothing else better to do but come up here and spend my time of public speaking because my life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness has been destroyed. And all these practices have been carried on, and nobody's going to recognize any of it. But where do I stand? Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Tovey. John Nyland. And after John, Arlene Gorgon? Gorgon?
Thank you. My name is John Nyland. I live in Indian Atlantic, Florida. And I am, like many people in this room tonight, I moved here because I believe in Brevard County. I invested my earnings here because I trust Brevard County. And most importantly of all, I brought my family here because we feel safe in Brevard County. I came here tonight to express my concerns about the social media postings of some members of this governing body. Language can encourage violence. Language can legitimize violence. And yes, language can be a form of violence itself. My concern is about the vitriolic language used in these postings and also about the lack of public response from this governing body. I am shocked, I am upset, and I am unnerved by these social media postings. Can you imagine how the people who were targeted by these postings must feel? And I'm sure you do after they've come up here. What would members of this commission do if these personal attacks were waged against your family, against your daughters, against your grandchildren? How would you feel? If you don't put a stop to it now, it will escalate to the next level. I am fulfilling my responsibility as a concerned citizen. See something, say something, do something. This commission needs to fulfill its responsibilities by speaking out publicly and putting an end to it. If this commission chooses to respond with indifference to these vulgar social media postings, I can assure you that residents of this county will not. The five commissioners currently sitting on this board were elected to office to serve and protect all residents of Brevard County. And I just want to end my comments with a very simple observation that this commission brought this evening upon themselves. And they brought it upon themselves because they failed to abide by their own pledge of civility. And when this board, when this commission leaves this room tonight, when everybody leaves this room tonight, I ask you, take one second of your time and read that pledge of civility again and ask yourselves, did this commission abide by their own pledge of civility? Thank you.
Thank you. Arlene. After Arlene, Cynthia.
Hello, I am Arlene Gorgon, and I reside in Rockledge. Some of what I am going to be saying is, at this point, quite repetitive. But I'm going to say it anyhow. I am here as a constituent of District 2, your district. I am here speaking to you as a human being, not with any other label attached. Could you and everyone else in this room close your eyes, open your minds, and forget your other labels for a few minutes? Forget that you are a Democrat or a Republican, a white, black, brown, straight, or LGBTQ person. Listen to me with your heart and brain. Turn off your bias and your anger. How would you feel if someone contacted your employer in order to try and get you fired because you criticized them on social media? And I do have quotes, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to quote them. How would you feel if you were called "a stupid rodent, trash, and a little blue ant"? Do you think that by joking about running people over under any circumstances is funny or appropriate? It's condoning violence. The comments that you make are condoning violence. What would you feel? Is the, I don't want to say anything inappropriate. I see your face throughout this evening. What would you feel if someone suggested that you should abort your future children because they would be a scourge to humanity and on the economy? Those were his quotes. We all have screenshots of what he has written. Commissioner Pritchett, Commissioner Isnardi, how does that make you feel as women? As one other individual said, "We are women, we are human beings." And how would you feel if someone said that to you in a public forum or private? What do you think and feel now? What do you think of a person who would write or say such things? What if this was written about your spouse, not just the abortion issue, any of these things? Your child, your parent? Is this acceptable for a representative of our government? Is it acceptable for anyone to say or write such things? It's not a matter of the First Amendment. It's common decency and being a human being in this very chaotic and negative world that we are living in right now.
I won't go on. Thank you. But, thank you. Cynthia Saturday. And after Cynthia, Sandra Sullivan?
Hello, my name is Cynthia Washburn-Saturday. Born and raised here, live in O'Gally. I emailed you on the 17th and 22nd of June about your assistant Vic Loebur, who had me doxxed Karen Colby and Janice Chris, who also spoke tonight about freedom of speech, provided, PM'd Vic my address. Janice was mistaken to think that I had an antique store in O'Gally. I hope to God they didn't harass anybody in O'Gally. And I've talked to you and I've sent you emails. Now, look through the papers, and you can see that even a guy posted my junior high picture, which was hideous, but just the same, he asked, "Am I doxxing? I'm just doing what Vic asked me to do." Now, how does this guy, and how do you represent all of us when you do what you do to us? What are you going to do about it? Now, something happens to my kids, she PM'd my address? Catch a break.
There is no order at this point.
Now, if something happens to my children because of this embellishment of hate?
Okay.
I will come at you, Vic, or whoever, with the fullest intent a criminal of civil law. I didn't insult anybody. I made a comment about Ted Nugent. Anybody that sings about a 13-year-old girl bedder because she's clean, and my book's a pedophile. And then when I called on Vic, that he was being a little double standard on his insults, then I got banned. Now, did they go to my... go to the antique store? They harass that person? What if that had been my antique store? And there's another example of them doxxing somebody else. They called their employer, and that's the third person, not to mention the lady that was up addressing him. My parents were stationed at Patrick Air Force Base. I was raised here. And to tell me I'm not an American because I didn't fight? Sorry, I had cancer at 22. The Air Force wouldn't take me at 23. But my father served in World War II and was a lifer in the US Army, in the Air Force. If you look, Vic asked me... he didn't ask me three nice times to go meet him for coffee. He called me an evil clown, crazy, all kinds of shit, and then he asked...
Please don't curse.
I'm sorry. Then he asked a sit-down with the first sergeant in him? Coward? That's not asking nicely to go to coffee. And I texted you about this, the 22nd and 17th and 22nd, and you've done nothing. You did have him remove the Get Cindy Saturday post, and you did have him remove an hour later when he said, "Step it up, get me everything on her, every thought and transaction," but you've done nothing about him. What are you going to do?
I really would like to comment.
So would I, but I'm not going to. No, because I'm not going to comment on it, so.
I'd really love to.
I would too, but I'm not going to.
You've been laughing the whole time.
Kate?
You're out of time, ma'am.
Sandra Sullivan?
Who are you?
And after Sandra Sullivan, Stell Bailey?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. Just wanted to give you an update on the dump situation in South Patrick Shores. The EPA is cutting back its testing on the site assessment. They've gone from having about 20 soil and gas samples, soil and water samples, and now they're only doing six, and they're only doing existing wells, which means they're not testing for floaters or sinkers, which means the petroleum products that float and the sinkers like TCE, which was found by the county when they did the testing of the drainage channel that's on the EPA epic study. The thing we're most concerned about finding in our neighborhood is the oil drums and hydraulic drums that were reportedly buried that were in the reports. So over the Fourth of July weekend, I dug up a piece of oil barrel along with the spout, and I pushed out the oil. You can see the oil in there. I called the... I wrote Virginia Barker in the county and Mary Ann Civil and my commissioner, and I advised them about this, and I was told to report it to DEP, which I did. DEP called me back, said, "You can deposit this at the hazardous waste center," and that was the end of that. So I said, "Well, what do I need to do? I need to go and dig up the barrel?" And they said, "No, we don't advise you go dig anything." So I went out there. I did dig for a little bit. I did find the oil barrel. There is an oil barrel in an upright position in my backyard. So I called DEP again, and they said, "Your property, your problem." Quote-unquote. "Your property, your problem." They said, "Possession is nine-tenths of the law, so it's your property, it's your problem." Second time said, quote-unquote, and I think that is despicable. It may come down to, I'm seeing a lot of pullback by the EPA and the agencies. I'm not getting phone calls back, and I'm just wondering whether the county may end up getting saddled with this. I want to let you know, and I want to ask for your help to help. This was in the hole beside it as well. This is a container of grease. This is a petroleum product. I can question that. It's like grease that you put in a grease gun or something. The material, there's a large CAFO ray tube that's this big. There is almost fluorescent, greenish-blue material that breaks down to a white powder, bluish powder. Who knows what it is? Then there's a fiberglass box beside it that... or it looks like fiberglass, but it's or some sort of heavy, no idea what it is. It's just the material's not... it's a solid waste dump, and those dumps of that air are worse. One last sentence, if you don't mind. The oil at that day is not just oil. They mix the aircraft solvent in with the oil, and that's what makes it dangerous.
I have to cut you off. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I just want to let you guys know, we need your help.
Thank you. Stell Bailey? And after Stell, Hope Guilford?
Stell Bailey, Cocoa, Florida. First, I want to address some of the concerns that are coming up here. I don't have any issues with anybody up here, but I have had personal issues where I'm a little worried that this will be taken too far. With a local municipality, we found out that they were printing material and sending it to our houses. We've had to place two injunctions. It's been a situation, to say the least, and hearing some of the stories coming up here tonight, I am very concerned. I... you know, how far is too far? You know, we go from Facebook, but then, you know, in my particular situation with this local municipality, we found out they were printing harassment, a disturbing harassment packet, and sent it to our house with bloody hands, and they participated in this. So I just hope that that will never happen with this county commissioner, and it'll never get taken that far. I am just very concerned. When I hear what they're saying up here, I feel for them because I've been through it personally, not with this commissioner, commissioners, but with Satellite Beach. Now, on to South Patrick Shores. As you all know, there's a PFOA and PFOS issue. We've been working with the state on a state and a federal level. We've been trying to get that situation taken care of, some help on that level. We know that other states are taking the initiative. They've got awesome numbers that they're taking it down to for the health and safety of their communities. All I'm asking for is you had a 12-year-old girl come up to this podium tonight, and you couldn't even reassure her that you were going to help, look into it, advocate for these communities that are dying and getting cancer and getting sick from contaminants?
That's a lot.
It's frustrating. Because I am a cancer survivor myself. I deal with these people every single day. They call me, and I get new cases. We have been collecting cases. We've got the Brevard County assessment put out, and they told us that there is a higher incidence of cancer rates. Some of you may not believe that. Some of you may think that there will never be enough tests, because there won't be. Not until we take the safety and health of our communities seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to the end. I'm going to put my foot down. We're going to the end. Hope Guilford? Oh, I think she left. Frank Golen? Did I say that right, Frank?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, staff, residents of Brevard. My name is Frank Golen. I live in North Merritt Island, Broad Acres. And I just wanted to come up tonight and comment that there's been a lot of... I've been watching all the negative press, and it's disturbing, but I just wanted to come up and also convey that Commissioner Loebur's been doing a lot of good work for us in District Two. He's really... I'm very concerned... my concerns are with water. You know, we're a hugely water-based community. It affects all aspects of Brevard County: tourism, aerospace, healthcare, you know, residence, real estate, all that. There's a lot of concern about the infrastructure of the municipal sewer systems and updating them and building on that. The lagoon, responsible development, drainage, stormwater drainage, muck. Those are the things that I've kept my finger on, those pulses, and watched them very closely. And Commissioner Loebur's worked very, very hard, very... just relentlessly at, you know, trying to go to these sewer sites, you know, talking to these folks, these plant managers, these site managers, seeing, you know, what they need. The lagoon, you know, dredging. There's a huge force of just, you know, spend money and dredge, and the problems are going to go away. Well, we've dredged, and the problems came back, and the muck has gone somewhere, and there's more muck to take out. So, you know, I didn't hear this in the past. I see Commissioner Loebur asking questions. He's on the Board of Directors representing the entire county on the IRL NEP, reminding the IRL NEP that Brevard owns, you know, 71% of that area of the lagoon is Brevard. The remainder is the other four counties combined for DEP state funding and EPA funding. So these are all really great things. I've seen meetings with EMS, with paramedics about, you know, more funding, more attention to them, which, you know, is another thing the community highly depends on. And personally, being a North Merritt Island resident, we have an HOA. It's not, I guess, like the traditional HOAs, but it's something where all the North Merritt Island residents get together. And a tremendous concern, and a tremendous concern of mine personally, is flooding, stormwater drainage and development, and, you know, what's going to happen? I mean, he's gone out there, he's engaged in the meetings, he's introduced us to Mr. Denninghoff. We've had great conversations. I've gotten educated on things, put my mind at ease about a lot of stuff. I've heard some people up here that I know in the community and respect make some very powerful comments. Several of them recommending that the Board of Commissioners ask for your resignation. I think that would be a tremendous mistake, and it would affect me and a lot of other residents terribly in District Two. And I commend you, and I say, "God bless you, and you have our support." Good night.
Time that right? Donna Morris? And after Donna Morris, Angelina Mates? Or Meadows? Donna Morris? You're not Donna? You have to fill out your own card, only just to...
I do have.
Yes, I'm sorry. And that's okay, that's all right. Angelina Mates? Moats? Mattis? And Rockledge? Not here? Okay. Latonya Hubbard? And after Latonya, Michelle Green?
Hello, my name is Latonya Hubbard. I live in West Cocoa District One. County Commissioner Kurt Smith, thank you for your concerns expressed by County Commissioner Loebur. The comments that County Commissioner Loebur communicated to me were disrespectful and unprofessional. As an elected official to the County Commissioner Board, you are all held to a higher standard. I understand that people will comment and give unwarranted opinions concerning all our county commissioners. When I review the County Code of Ethics and Brevard County Mission, Vision, and Core Value Statements, it holds the county commissioners to preserve and maintain the integrity of the office you are holding. Myself, as a parent of young children, believe we as adults are supposed to be role models for the next generation. What example are we leaving for them to follow? As a diverse community, we should be able to disagree and have different opinions without being polite, impolite, disrespectful to one another. I believe the Brevard County Commissioner should return to his core values, which are honesty, openness, leadership, innovation, quality, and accountability. Accountability is an obligation. Our willingness to accept responsibility or to account for one's action. Thank you.
Thank you. After Michelle, Barbara Ludlow?
Good evening. My name is Michelle Green, and I'm from Merritt Island. I have friends in both parties, and until 2016, the extent of my participation was to vote in every election. But since 2016, I have taken a crash course in politics. I've chosen to get more involved, to get to know candidates and voters in my precinct and district. I appreciate community leaders calling out Commissioner Loebur for his behavior. I hope action is taken. If things do not change, my next crash course will be in recalling my commissioner. I believe that can be done one year after his taking his position. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Ludlow? And after Barbara, Matthew Fleming?
My name is Barbara Ludlow. I live in Melbourne. I too am a retired teacher and know the use of Facebook and social media. And I was totally appalled by what was written and said about people maliciously, the Patel's. I didn't come to talk tonight, but when I heard you, Madam Chairman, when you decided to allow this woman sitting over here that, of course, left right after she said her piece and spent two minutes talking about Stacy and Sanjay Patel in that vicious manner, I was pretty appalled. That should have never occurred, to let somebody stand up and attack somebody else.
Well, I wasn't expecting it, and I got it under control, and I asked her to stop, and she stopped. And we weren't expecting it. We've had a lot of people say some pretty horrific things about not just Stacy, but about us up here too. And so, I mean, I... again, it's sometimes difficult, and I paused her time. I just want to be respectful and respond. It's sometimes difficult being in my position because I don't want to scold anybody's right to free speech. However, with Ms. Martin's item, it got so far off of what her item was. Again, it's a fine line trying to find that balance. So I didn't mean to any disrespect or to do anything malicious. I'm trying to be fair to everybody, just so you're aware.
I'm just saying, she spent two minutes defaming the Patel's with things that weren't even true, and I would like to defer my...
But that's a matter, again, it may not be true, but there may be some things... I haven't started your time. I'm just saying, there may be things that aren't true that's said about a lot of people. So again, I'm just... honestly, I'm trying to be fair. I promise.
Well, I'm saying the truth.
I'll restart you, and I'll shut my mouth.
It's all right. I want to defer my two minutes to the Patel's that you gave this woman so that they can defend themselves.
Ms. Bentley?
We don't allow for that, right? We can't defer time to another...
No, you don't have...
Yeah. It's just... it's against the policy.
They have procedures, and it's not included in the procedure.
You can use your two minutes if you'd like.
Okay. All right. Matthew Fleming? And after Matthew, Karen Colby?
My name's Matthew Fleming, Satellite Beach.
Satellite Beach. I'm here to talk about Agenda Item F5, which is with respect to the Mid-Reach Shore Protection Project. And I'm curious, the memorandum...
We've already voted on that.
Yeah, the memorandum of agreement among the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and Brevard County Board of County Commissioners regarding the use of outer continental shelf sand resources for shore protection restoration. What does that say? It's a memorandum. You guys voted on it and approved it. Okay, I'd like to point out to everyone in this room, no, they don't know what they're voting on half the time. And we're sitting here talking about one commissioner who definitely crossed the line. And if you take a second and think about what just any regular guy's reaction would be in the county, if someone said something like that to his wife, you can see how things like this eventually lead to calls for violence. It's dangerous. That's why it needs to stop. And it's a distraction. I came here today to talk, and I'd been planning on it, to talk about the material that's being dumped on our beach in Satellite from the Air Force Base down to Indian Atlantic. There's been three projects that uses dirt and not sand. It's called Upland Sources of Material. In the project description, it means inland. My hope is that in the next couple of weeks, once we move past this distraction, that I can meet with some of you, any of you, to discuss removing Upland sources as being approved for use to be dumped on our beaches here because everyone loves the beach and what's been happening is wrong. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:15.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett.
Why not? I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have to make a, we have to vote on extending the meeting beyond 11 o'clock for anybody unfamiliar. Okay, Ms. Karen Colby. Please don't put me in the position of getting personal as much as possible. Although my chief of staff was attacked and I guess that's not personal because he works for the county. Go ahead. Name and address, please.
Karen Colby, Indian Harbor Beach. And I find it, first of all, I'm kind of shook up right now because, and I'm going to need someone to escort me out to my car safely. Okay. Because we had somebody just a moment ago shouting at me and ironically, there were other people were complaining about people shouting at them. So, I just say it is correct. It's happening on both sides. And as a woman and as a mom of six and as a lifetime resident of Brevard County and as a lifetime Indian Harbor Beach resident, Mr. Smith is my man. However, and I'm sorry, anytime I've had a problem, there's another person that I could get a hold of. That would be Mr. Loeb. I contacted him about the bad beach sand. I've contacted him about dirt coming over the rocks and what to do about that. I've tried to talk, I've talked to him about the water situation at South Patrick Shores because it affects us. I've had people and friends die from diseases, cancers caused by the bad water. Mr. Loeb is the only one on this panel that I have talked to. One other I have sent messages to, I'm sorry, and not heard anything from. So, he is very reachable. He's very respectful. I didn't know him from Adam and I'm just a mom of six. And when I started getting involved, it was because of unfairness in a small municipality. And I saw some things going on and I decided to start opening my mouth. And I have been. And ever since then, it seems to offend... I am a Republican. I'm wearing a red shirt, that's probably obvious. It offends those who do not wear red shirts. So, when I came up here to see my piece, I was going to talk to you some more about this issue with the dredging and tell you that y'all got lied to about the tubes that were going to put the stuff on the side of the water and it wasn't going to come back in. I was going to tell you about there being no berms, no liner and that toward the island is going to get covered with arsenic materials most likely very soon now because it's all going to wash back in. It's hurricane season. Look at the rains we've had. They're going to dump toxic muck on the side of the road. That's what I came here to talk about. But like Mr. Fleming said, he spent time talking about something else. I did get two chances, thank you. I just want to say that I have been personally attacked. I have been threatened with death. I have been threatened with many things. Now, we were making fun of a snow plow. We don't have those in Florida. I would challenge anybody on this board to find me one snow plow within 150 miles of here that will turn on. Okay? It was a joke. We are allowed to make jokes. I have had the worst things come across and people think it's fine if the blue party does it, then the red doesn't. Yes, come together, let's be civil. He's right. We should all be civil. I'm trying to be. And I appreciate your time, guys. And I do appreciate the opportunity to say thank you for your service.
Eileen Davis. And after Eileen, Robert Burns.
Good evening, thank you.
Eileen Davis. Sorry. Here, go ahead.
Eileen Davis, Cocoa, Florida. Actually, wasn't planning on being here and then 9 o'clock I started coming down. There's been a lot of talk about civility and about code of conduct. I think civility needs to be on both sides. I've been where you are in Titusville, on Titusville City Council, where I got death threats, wore a bulletproof vest and had to have a police escort to city council meetings until I finally resigned out of fear for my own life. One of the things I would just like to bring up is I've been listening all night. In the previous commission, there was a commissioner named Robin Fisher. Robin Fisher attacked people far worse, I think, in many cases, right up there constantly if he didn't like what they had to say. And he was a big, big guy. So, I think I would like to see a code of conduct but where it applies to everyone, not just to the commissioners, but to the people who come in. And also to maybe set a requirement in that code of conduct that the only things to be discussed here are commission business, things that deal with Brevard County. Let's ignore, let's get out of all the personal attacks. People were attacking Brian. I've listened to the tape that he got, the phone call that he got at 1:46 in the morning. I've never heard such profanity and the way he handled it was very professional. I've seen the stuff that's on email with the F this and F that and F that. At least I've never heard any profanity from him. But I think if we want to have this done and deal with the problems in Brevard County, which are numerous, that if we're going to have a code of conduct, it can't be just one-way street. It has to be with everyone that is involved and comes before. And to have some rules that if they're not talked, free speech, I understand free speech, I totally agree. But when you're dealing with the meetings of the county commission in the interest of all taxpayers and of everyone, how about if we stick to county business? Because really, we had no one in this room, no one coming forward that I know of that complained when Robin Fisher was attacking constituents right and left. So, maybe it's time to be fair to everyone and remember, it didn't start with Brian.
Thank you. Mr. Burns, name and address, please. Whoops.
Robert Burns, Viera, Florida. I apologize. I tried to get here on time for the agenda item. So, I guess I'll just cover it in public comments. But I wanted to speak on Mel's item. Like Mel, I am also retired from the military. And in the military, we have a lot of rules. A lot of those rules are a result of somebody doing something stupid. You know, that happened, somebody does something stupid that you couldn't anticipate and then all of a sudden we need to create a rule for it. One example would be somebody pushing over a porta potty, you know, while another guy's in there and the guy gets crap all over him, spread all over the place. So, we had to create a rule that you can't push over porta potties when people are in the porta potty. Something stupid has happened here and I think what Mel is asking for is that we create a rule. And I think the rule is to prevent the same thing from happening with the porta potties, that we stop crap from being spilled all over everybody. Something that I learned about when I was stationed out in Texas, kind of an in-your-face state, was something called fighting words. And Commissioner Loeb has used the First Amendment as protection for a lot of things that he's said from up here and from on Facebook. But I just want to read this so I get it right. So, a lot of people don't know that there is a thing ruled on the Supreme Court called fighting words. And fighting words are words intentionally directed toward another person which are so venomous and full of malice as to cause the hearer to suffer emotional distress or incite him or her immediately retaliate physically. Fighting words are not an excuse or defense for retaliatory assault and battery. However, if they are so threatening as to cause apprehension, they can form the basis for a lawsuit for assault, even though the words alone did not constitute an assault. The utterance of fighting words is not protected by the free speech protection of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. And that's ruled by the Supreme Court. I think that the words and in the context that Commissioner Loeb has used them would certainly incite violence in most circumstances. Sanjay Patel is one of the most compassionate people that I know and I talk to them quite frequently. However, if it was my wife that he was speaking about with that, it would certainly incite violence upon Commissioner Loeb and the context that he used him in. So, I think that maybe it should be considered that what he has said on numerous accounts is not protected free speech, although he feels like he needs that protection. I'm just asking that maybe we need to go ahead and create a rule to stop somebody from doing something stupid.
Stacy Patel. Stacy. And after Stacy, Mark DeMorenville.
Hi. When I chair a meeting where...
Can you say your name again? I'm sorry.
My name's Stacy. I live in Satellite Beach. When I chair a meeting where I'm asking people to engage civically, I often explain to them what's going on in the forum. And I just have a question and I don't even know that you'll answer it. Perhaps you'll ignore me. But we moved from Item J7 to K and there was no discussion or consideration of the proposal that was made. So, I just want to confirm that that's the case, that you're ignoring everything everyone said. You're not discussing it and you're not addressing it. Is that correct?
Mark DeMorenville.
Sure. Sure, you love it.
Name and address.
Oh, yeah. My name's Mark. I'm in Merritt Island. So, I wasn't even going to speak today. You know, I'm not always about the whole public speaking thing. And then, Commissioner Loeb, all due respect, he had mentioned that Stacy Patel was a racist and that just, I was like confused because... Some background. I actually went to a liberal arts school for two years before coming here. And I was in the Democratic Party, all for it. I have since moved to independent because I am personally, I don't like identity politics. I don't like where it's gone. And I know that's going to be a controversial statement, but that's just how I feel. And with that said, and I can like totally see where he may have been coming from, but Stacy Patel is one of the most compassionate, one of the most understanding individuals that I've ever had the pleasure of dealing with. And honestly, I couldn't see her as any kind of like prejudiced individual in that sense. Like, I couldn't because of just the kindness I've seen with her over like the four years I've known her. And I totally get it. Like, I was like a resident of the system for two years. Like, we had to be professionally silenced in a way, as you may feel. And, but the thing about it is that it kind of came with the job.
That's it?
That's it.
Public comment cards. Any comment from Commission? I'm going to comment and I probably am going to regret it the second I start it. And it's only because I don't want to be misunderstood and I don't want to be misquoted and I don't want to be judged based on what I say because I have difficulty expressing my thoughts or opinions. The reason why, you know, I've been criticized for not responding, the only person that called for a response besides the news was Florida Today. And you can ask Mr. Berman, I think I've talked to him twice in 18 months because at least for me personally, I don't view them as a legitimate news source. That's just me. However, and again, again, that's just me. And I'm not, it's no reflection on Dave because Dave is a very kind, gentle, caring person and I personally think he's a decent human being. So, however, again, I let you speak, let me speak. And I'll just say there's some history with some of the comments that were made. There's some relationships. And I find it interesting that someone that says that they contacted my office to complain about my employee is doxing them the same way that they're complaining about being doxed. So, I'm not quite sure I understand that. So, again, I would like to address each one individually. I think Ms. Martin was very civil when she came up. I think that there's a lot of animosity on both sides that doesn't go anywhere. Some of my closest friends that I've worked with over the years, Michelle Passion being one of them, Democrat I worked with for two terms, is probably one of the finest human beings on the globe. So, I know it can be done. Mr. Redinger, who, you know, fiery guy, used to cause issues in his own party sometimes, probably one of the nicest, we were working on a project before he got sick and died. So, I know it can be done. However, when politics gets involved and you get off of topic, I sat here very passionately and talked about a landfill that's going to come at the entrance of Brevard County and didn't have one speaker card. Instead, it was a plethora of attacks, whether justified or not. It became about Mr. Loeb, it became about employees, it became about me personally, it became about everybody. And I'm not up here whining about, I'm no martyr by serving in an office and we understand that we take that on as we come. But my family has received threats. I've been followed home in my previous position and threatened. And I've, again, I'm not complaining by any means, but I'm saying I understand that comes with the territory. So, I do, when someone says, "How would you feel?" Trust me, I've been threatened with horrific sexually explicit things being done to me. I've been threatened with, you know, this is what's going to happen to your family. I hope your kids like going to school with my kids. I mean, I could go on and on, but I'm no victim. This is what I signed up for. I understand it comes with the territory. So, I'm not up here complaining, but I'm saying to say that we don't understand isn't fair either. And I have an open door policy. Anybody that wants to come and see me, I will speak with as long as you haven't personally threatened me, threatened my staff, threatened my family. Obviously, if somebody's done something in my office or somebody in my house or somebody, I mean, gosh, file an ethics complaint. Go to the police if you're in fear for your safety. Please, I would recommend, I mean, I would do that at this point. I mean, within reason, of course, because like I said, I get threats often. But at the same time, I mean, I do, I have an open door policy. I've worked with plenty on the left, in the center and on the right. And I welcome that. Call my office. I'm open to meetings and open to ideas. But I don't think tonight, obviously passions are high and I understand. I don't know that tonight we're going to make any headway as far as taking an action. I think that has to come from a commissioner rather than another three-hour discussion potentially and some hurt feelings or things said that are regretted and otherwise. So, again, I hope I didn't sound like a crazy chattering fool. I just wanted to at least address it. I'm not ignoring any of your comments. Commissioner Smith? Thank you. See, that's what I'm talking about. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the hour is late and I, like most of you, want to go home, get something to eat and go to bed. But I think at this point, to not comment on what has been said tonight and the conduct that people are referring to and mostly in the name of Commissioner Loeb would be condoning his behavior, which I don't. Mr. Loeb and I have spoken a couple of times about his comments and behavior. And I will share one thing with you that I said to him. In my seven months, or now it's been eight months that I've worked with him, I find him to be highly intelligent and he's very discerning. And he looks at topics and subjects and tries to find a solution. And he's very good at that. And he's obviously got a big heart because he's got a passion for dogs and... thayis for the very last time, you will leave a legacy behind. So the legacy is of your making. Do you want that legacy to be that you're an intelligent guy, that is very discerning, and that wants to solve problems? Or do you want that legacy to be that you're a kind-hearted person that has a big heart for dogs and puppies? Or do you want that legacy to be you're short-tempered with a short fuse? And I said, it's up to you, it's your, it's your call, it's your choice. And, you know, like all of us, we have choices to make, and how we conduct ourselves is a choice. So that's about all I'm going to say tonight, because we only have two more minutes, but I intend to say more at the next meeting, and I'd like to hear what my fellow Commissioners have to say as well.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, five zero. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll be pretty quick on this one. I was Googling what doxx is, that should tell you my familiarity with online environment. And to the young lady in the front, don't start a story with bloody hands and not tell us where that go- I was wondering, you know, what the heck is going on? So I need, I need, you know, I don't mean to, there needs to be end to that. Anyone's welcome in my office, as soon as you enter my office, you, you're confronted with a Friends of John Tobias wall. These are constituents that have emailed me, and you should see some of the hateful stuff that I've got. I don't want to say the word asshole because it's wrong, but don't email me that because I have enough of them, okay? So I need to make a shout out to-
I can't stop it once he says it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I need to make a shout out to, I don't know who she is, I looked you up, but this is the one hanging all over the place to a Jennifer Caw. If you are going to be in Jennifer Caw, CA, if you are going to be insulting, go with a Jennifer Caw. Let me, let me read it to you, because this one I love, and I almost have it memorized. "One need only look at your miserable face to know you lack of soul." This is my favorite part right here. It is, is it because your parents always loved your kinder, more successful brother? My brother's a physician, and I'm telling you, that one got to me more than anything else I have ever gotten.
And he's amazing, by the way.
Yeah, he is, yeah, thank you for rubbing it in that my younger brother is a doctor.
He's lovely, he really is.
Yeah, yes, yes, smarter, more successful, beautiful wife, four kids, I got it. Yes. So after I tried to pass a resolution that didn't go anywhere, someone in the audience contacted not only my boss, but the president of the college in which I work, and then at least two of the members of the Board of Trustees, asking that I be dismissed from the college for a resolution, which I tried to pass up here. We do face pressure on, on this, that is not an excuse for anything, but a lot happens that, you know, you may not be necessarily aware of. But here's my two cents on this whole thing, I don't know that we're going to come to any agreement, but I would ask this, in football, when a player is about ready to catch a ball, you can't hit them, they're defenseless. That is not us here. We have a microphone, and some of us decide to use it some ways, others don't. I'm telling you who doesn't have a microphone, and it's the staff around here. The staff is put in a terrible, when I hear what some of the staff gets, it's atrocious. And let me, and listen, I'm not saying necessarily you guys, many times it's us up here, and let me, let me tell you, let me tell you why, I just, the staff works their tail off here, and they can't comment back, we can comment back, but they can't comment back because they work for us, and their livelihood is based on this. I don't like government, never been a fan of government, I've never been a fan of bureaucrat. But while we may not agree on language and comments, and what should and what should not be said up here, maybe we, maybe we can get to some understanding. But the reason I was so impassioned on the historical commission of everything is because a staff member, someone crossed, someone crossed the line with a, with a staff member. So, you know, your comments to us, by all means, continue. Again, please don't just do one word, be creative, man, that is, whoever Jennifer Caw is, I wish she wouldn't have used a fake name, because I want to congratulate her, that was, I will not, that is the best email I've ever gotten as an elected official, and it is framed and laminated in my office. But, but please remember, behind the five of us, even if you have a disagreement with how we vote, or what we say, whether it's justified or unjustified, remember that there are more than 2,000 public servants out there that are working their tail off to keep you safe and to provide services across Brevard County. So hopefully, we can come to agreement on all this civility stuff, maybe not tonight, but hopefully in the future, but just, you know, keep your, keep your thoughts out for all of the thousands of people that make Brevard such a, such a great place.
Commissioner Pritchett?
It is late, and so to get the best conversation, I think we're probably going to need to digest this stuff and come back with, with some thoughts. Mel, thank you for bringing that, and thank you for your demeanor and always the way you break things, you're, you're very appreciated. Just a couple things, and I'm not, I'm not trying to make any of this light, I know it's very painful, and a lot of things have been very intense, but look, social media, it's horrible, and I, I don't know how to control all that. And let me tell you what, I, I went on and started doing some research, and I'm kind of shocked growing up saying, do some of the stuff that they're saying these days, and I've been watching over the teenagers, but I'm realizing now we might have to watch over the adults as well. You know, you know when you say stuff that's going to provoke, I mean, we're smart enough to know what we're doing, and you know what, it's just got to quit. And my recommendation is, one, you got to quit doing politics on Facebook, Commissioners, and, and people out there, you just got to do it. I just, I won't do it, I won't engage in it. Number one, if you do that, you can't delete people who cuss about your dog, you know? So I'm, I'm just not going to do it, I won't, I won't get into that arena, you never win, and it's, you just get set up to get taken out, and you're just, it just doesn't serve any purpose, plus there's going to be some violation of sunshine law, so I don't know maybe that's some, something we can work on later. But as far as here, we work on being civil here. I can't control what everybody's doing out there. If, if I could, I would love to be able to do that, but, but we can't do that. So I'm going to beg everybody in this room to maybe start watching what you're saying and doing, and I know your feelings might be hurt with some things, you might have got offended, but everybody's going to have to pick this up and start making changes. And, and you know what, who said the worst thing or whatever, I don't, I don't like any of it.
Excuse me, we're talking up here.
No, and that's part of it too, you know, we're up here having conversations, and then everybody's yelling civility, but nobody's civil. I mean, no, 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 ma'am.
Okay, that's enough. Okay.
Ma'am, I do, I think I'm very kind, I know, but I am right now, I'm talking and you're interrupting.
And it's been months, and the constant attacks are getting old, there's no productive stuff happening here when this happens.
And it's really got to quit. If you guys want to get somewhere, you tick somebody off, you're going to shut the door, and you're not going to get anything changed. So on this, I just want to make just a couple things. I am really sorry for some of the stuff that was said, it was painful. And Commissioner Loeb, I'm really sorry for some of the stuff that's put at you, I mean, I, I looked at some of the stuff, I can't believe some of the stuff that everybody's doing, it's just got to quit. But ma'am, I really am sorry for that, I really am, it shouldn't have happened. Commissioner Loeb, some of those things being put out, that just shouldn't be happening. And I'm telling you right now, I'm really glad my children and grandchildren aren't seeing that, because that's not what the next generation coming up that I want to see. So I'm begging each of us to make some changes in this. And you know what, it's going to, it's just going to have to start from someone, somewhere, someone's just going to have to get into some forgiveness here, so that we can move forward and make some, some changes. A couple of things I thought through with here, you know what, if, if you don't want to read the stuff, get off of it, you know, stay out of it, you're not going to win on it, and you're not going to make any changes there. And you shake your head all you want, but this is what I believe, and it's what I'm moving forward in, and I think it's a good path to start in. And at the end of the day, people can be mad or not mad at you, but you know, there really is a God. And you know what, hopefully by the end of the day, you're pleasing him, and when you do, you're kind to other people.
Amen.
Very well said, well said. Commissioner Loeb?
If my mic is working here, okay. So, you know, I've, I've never been one to be bullied or mobbed into doing anything or not doing anything. I've had a bunch of people try to essentially threaten me into apologizing, but I am going to offer an apology, maybe not the apology that folks are looking for, but I do want to apologize to my colleagues up here, I want to apologize to staff, I see a lot of hard-working people, I want to apologize to the deputies, to the clerk's office, because this is a waste of time, you know, a lot of this has been an incredible waste of time that quite frankly, we shouldn't have had to have gone through. And, you know, I, for the, to the degree that my comments led to reactions that caused this, I apologize to that, but I'm not going to apologize for comments that were made in jest, that have been taken out of context to make them into more, but I am sorry that the, the outcome has been what it's been. You know, it's something I do feel for you, I know it's 11 o'clock at night, or after that at this point, and genuinely, I am sorry to the folks that have to be here that are here on account of it.
Oh, hang on, and just for the record, Eden, I mean, a censure, as far as that was go, because that was suggested quite a bit, wouldn't be appropriate in this case, only because it doesn't pertain to, within a meeting or Robert's rules, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just for the record, that's probably why it was not brought as an item by any Commissioner. And also as well, again, you know, over the years, I think maybe becoming wise, maybe, maybe being foolish in some ways, because I've seen some pretty horrific things said about me, my family, my children, whatever, is I don't engage, and you know, it's the only way to stay out of it. Now, sometimes somebody will have a legitimate question, and I'll respond, but as far as the attacks go, oftentimes, you're not going to change somebody's mind or make them like you, based on some of what, what they're commenting about. So I have an official page, sometimes people will send me messages, sometimes the messages are so awful that I don't respond. So I don't think that I'm obligated to respond when someone's attacking, I don't think that that's productive for anybody. So again, I have an open door, I've worked with some great Democrats, just because I'm a Republican doesn't mean I'm reasonable. But I will control to the best of my ability, and honestly, with my pure heart, what goes on at the meetings here. That's why I try to, you know, Ms. Karen, who I, who I love and respect, I try to not have her attack somebody personally. I mean, you can attack us personally, obviously, we allowed that to occur, and I tried to keep Mr. Loeb from talking too much, because I'm trying to do my job as far as what goes on in this meeting. However, I cannot control what someone does outside this meeting if it doesn't violate the official business of the county, unless we change the rules somehow and try to enforce that. I don't know, I don't know how much control and power we have over people's First Amendment rights outside of these chambers. All I know is I'll do my best to maintain civility within them. You know, I'm not Mr. Loeb's mother, I mean, I, he's a Commissioner up here, if he conducts himself properly during the meeting, there won't be any problems, but I'm not there to tell him what he can and can't say on his own time, whether I condone it or not, is what, is what it boils down to. Same with my employees, I mean, I'm going to tell him, you can't argue with somebody, and I understand why, you know, you work with somebody for several years, and he sees the berating, horrific things that people say about me online, because they just decide they don't like me, or they just have hated me all these years. So it's, it's almost instinctive for him to react as a protective employee or friend would, so it's hard to criticize, I mean, I do, you know, I have talks with him about it, but I can't tell him not to do it, I can ask him not to. And oftentimes, he does calm down for a while, and tell him to stay off of Facebook, is my friend, and otherwise, and he does that. But I understand why he's protective as well, because honestly, I'm not complaining, and again, I profess to be no martyr, if you could only see and hear the stuff that, that we get thrown at us sometimes, I think you would be really surprised. We're human too. All right, I'm done, I'm sorry. Okay. That's funny, because we're moving on to the next item, which is Commission business, and we've all kind of spoken, so for Board reports, Mr. Batte?
Just one item, Commissioners, I wanted to, in the night, thanking a variety of staff, Don Walker, Jeff McKnight, Scott Barrett, who did a tremendous job over the last 30 days to accomplish everything that you see and hear. We had, you know, this carpeting was 27 years old, we, we've got new equipment with, you know, which is HD, so we can continue putting these meetings and get them on various stations. It's more ADA compliant, and so they did a tremendous job in that 30-day period to get that, and we appreciate their hard work and the hard work of their staff. Thank you.
Ms. Bentley?
Yes, I have one item. I'd like to request permission to advertise for an executive session to be held before, or I'm sorry, after the July 23 regular meeting to discuss the 11th Circuit decision in Williamson et al. versus Brevard County, that's the case you know is the prayer case.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb for the executive session, July 23, after the regular meeting. Second by Commissioner Smith, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is that it? Ms. Pritchett? Mr. Loeb?
I have a couple items. I just found out today that it appears Jane Templeton, who was president of the Field Manor in Merritt Island, passed away this morning, so I just want to offer my condolences to her friends and family. Terrible, terrible news to get at any point in time, but, you know, she'll certainly be missed. And then also, we had Judge Clarence Johnson pass away, I believe, was it on the 4th? On the 4th of July, and he was a legal icon here, and left the world much better than he founded. So we've had a couple very solid human beings go by the wayside in the recent past, and, you know, my condolences to them, and certainly to their family and friends.
Is that it? Mr. Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be, try to be brief on this one. I mentioned before break that I was interested in evaluating some county charter changes, and I spoke with the county attorney's office, and she indicated that there would be minimal staff time in order to bring back an RFP for us to look at. So unless there's any type of issue with that, in, in her words, that staff time would be minimal, so just the RFP. So, you know, I wanted to run that by here if there were any objections. And second of all, on March 12, Commissioner Loeb brought forward a proposal to limit the authority of certain CRAs, including Palm Bay's Bayfront CRA, until an interlocal agreement was entered into. Commissioner Zanardi stated that she was informed that Palm Bay would be, quote, "shifting towards the business district," and the business district would involve the TIF, starting, stating that it is no county money at all. Of course, on June 10, the city sent county manager's office an email questioning why an interlocal agreement was necessary, and all, the city, quote, "does not intend to expire its CRA prior to the original sunset of 2024." So given that, you know, county, given that the Chair Zanardi has been communicating with the city on the subject, I did not want to bring forward any proposal before having a discussion. However, it's clear that Palm Bay is really not interested in playing ball. So I would like to bring Commissioner Loeb's proposal forward, unless he wants to bring it forward, because, you know, but obviously, we can't do this in, not, not now, obviously, but at the next meeting.
No, my, my thought, if I can, my thought on that subject, if they've not negotiated in good faith, and I'd have to speak with Mr. Batte about that, I have no problem nuking them. And I will tell you, and you might actually be rather pleased to hear this, is prior to the break, I was of the impression that the city of Cocoa was doing some pretty, pretty decent things in terms of making progress with us in negotiating interlocal, that would have involved the US1 CRA essentially being shut down, more or less now, slightly extending the Diamond Square CRA and making a lot of concessions with respect to that now, since I've gotten back. I understand that there's been some seesawing and some hemming and hawing on that. If we don't get back to a position closer to what we were at prior to the break, I may actually go and essentially bring the motion that you brought forth before, to dissolve them or to defund them, just depending upon what they do or do not do, to continue working with us in good faith, as they appeared to be prior to the break. So I'm not opposed to shutting down CRAs that aren't negotiating in good faith.
And I will tell you, and you might actually be rather pleased to hear this, is prior to the break, I was of the impression that the City of Cocoa was doing some pretty, pretty decent things in terms of making progress with us and negotiating interlocal that would have involved the US1 CRA essentially being shut down more or less now, slightly extending the Diamond Square CRA and making a lot of concessions with respect to that now. Since I've gotten back, I understand that there's been some seesawing and some hemming and hawing on that. If we don't get back to a position closer to what we were at prior to the break, I may actually go and essentially bring the motion that you brought forth before to dissolve them or to defund them, just depending upon what they do or do not do, to continue working with us in good faith as they appeared to be prior to the break. So I'm not opposed to shutting down CRAs that aren't negotiating in good faith.
So I don't want to step on your toes, but hopefully, I'll put it on, but I'd rather-
Yeah, if you want to put it on, I'll support it.
Okay, it'll be just yours. And finally, one last question, Billy Prasad's in my office, quick question, you have to be honest about this, are you Jennifer Kau?
That one wrote to me as well, creative stuff.
Mr. Bate?
I do need to mention that, since that, yes, right, yes, I am.
But I think even he likes, I think even he likes your brother better.
Since the email came from Palm Bay, we did have a dialogue with them and they have submitted a draft interlocal agreement that I met with the county attorney either this morning or yesterday. And it, it does not, it addresses some of the areas that the Board had concern with, it does leave the CRA to continue until the normal expiration of its term. And so I do have that draft and we were discussing following up with them. We also plan to follow up with Cocoa on their two proposals with the revisions that they countered and we are looking to go back, we're going to speak obviously with the District Two Commission, Commission Office because it impacts them and there were some changes that specifically would involve District Two. And so, once we get that input, you know, within the next couple of weeks, we plan to get back to both of them.
Anything further? No. Mr. Smith?
Let's go home.
Amen.
And I guess in regards to the CRA stuff, you know, I think sort of the deferred was because, only because I was familiar with the CRA and they came to me and asked me for the extension. I had no idea that there was going to be an issue, that was the information I was giving as far as, no, no, I'm not saying from you, I'm saying from the city. I didn't know-
I'm not holding you.
Yeah, I did what the city asked, they'd asked that I, you know, try to extend it because basically, if, if anybody remembers, they had, they were working on a deal over by Robert Conlon and they were concerned they were going to lose that, that whole development if we were trying to push the interlocal. Now, Ms. Bentley, they, they don't have to end their CRA early, correct? They can go to 2024 anyhow. The only thing we can control is the debt, correct?
Right, and I believe they've already committed, I'm sorry, they've already pledged those funds and some tri-party agreements, so there may be some, some inability to move where, to an earlier date.
Right. So we can, we can move to try to, you know, end the CRA sooner, but we don't have, we won't have the authority to do that and I think the whole idea is to get a good interlocal if we can.
All I was trying to infer is that, in the email, they indicated they were questioning whether there should be an interlocal. Since then, that position's changed and they have given us a draft. The terms of that draft would be something, obviously, when we get it finalized, we would bring back for the Board for your consideration.
Yeah, because honestly, when, when Mr. Anderson spoke with me over there about it, he seemed genuinely like that was the path that they were going to go. So I think that there's some confusion between what the intention was versus what may be the intention now. I don't think anybody deliberately misled us, if that makes sense. I don't think anybody did anything to be nefarious or misleading, I think it was just, you know, maybe they got a new idea or brilliant change. But I spoke with Mr. Councilman Santiago about it and he hadn't heard anything like that and he was supposed to get back with me and let me know what was going on, but we'll see. Hopefully, everything goes right, but with that, I don't have anything. And I apologize for rambling, thanks you for, thank you for your patience with our new equipment and trying to keep that in order and I appreciate everybody that came, thank you so much. With that, meeting adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.